Okay, we are adjourning into open session at this moment. We were just in executive session. So I'll call the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for November 12th back into order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, my first selectman's report is rather brief today. First and most important, I'd like to welcome all of our -- oh, thank you, Krista. Public comment, is there any public comment this evening? Jim, good evening.
Good evening. Jim Cameron, 55, Debois Street in Darien. I'm going to come before you in a couple of minutes wearing my TV-79 hat, but I'm wearing my citizen resident Darien hat right now. First of all, congratulations on your election. I know from having watched you all at the Candidates Night that you value, as our first selectwoman does, the value and the importance of open transparent government. And to her credit, she has been marvelous in making sure that TV-79 has access to all the meetings and it's been great to work with you in that regard as well, too. Under my TV-79 duties, I was looking through the town website to make sure I had updated email addresses on all the newly elected and appointed officials. And I discovered, to my surprise, that I did a quick inventory and I found out that, well, of the 29 boards, authorities, advisory, elected and appointed committees and such that are on the town website, 27 of them do have a list of names of the people that are on those boards, commissions, et cetera. Only seven of them, however, have an email address or a telephone number or a mailing address. And I have a quick inventory, which I made, brought copies of, so you can take a look at this. This comment is in no way meant as a criticism of the town staff who works very hard to keep the website updated. However, it's really more, I think, an observation that for citizens in this town to be able to reach out to their elected and appointed officials, they need to have information readily available. I think email address is best. Home address, fine. Telephone number, okay. That's great in addition as well. But having served, like 12 years ago with Karen Armour, who was then moderator of the RTM on an advisory panel looking at redoing the town website, I remember 12 years ago, one of our first criteria and priorities was making sure that everybody who represents anyone in town, either appointed or elected, has an email address, either their personal address or one they created for themselves or a DarienCT.gov address, so that people can find you and they can reach out to you and they can talk to you about that. So I'm hoping that in the interests of transparent and open and engaged government, that's something that I'm not sure you can make as a mandate, but can certainly recommend, I think, to the chairs and the people that are running those other boards and commissions. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Yeah, I really appreciate the work on this and I will turn to Kate and I will ask her, Kate, can we mandate that everyone publishes an email address?
I don't know. We can definitely -- I'm just looking to see because I'm surprised at some of the ones that apparently don't have them. We can ask them to put links -- okay, so you say that the Board of Selectmen does not have emails on the webpage, but I'm looking right at it right now. I'm looking at the Board of Selectmen.
I don't think it's the duly elected members as of the last time I looked at that, yesterday.
Okay, that is true. That is not the --
But that's true.
That's true. Absolutely understand.
The old members were in effect until midnight last night, so the new members take effect today. So we're in time of transition.
That's right. But there's others that don't have, they may have an email for one member, maybe the chair of the committee, but they don't have them for the other participants.
Yeah, the Board of Finance has them all, includes, has all their, and they are actually up to date. I don't, I'm not sure whether we can mandate or not. It's, you know, some people are unwilling to use town email addresses. And I think I would have a really hard time forcing somebody who's not willing to use a town email address to put a personal email address out on the website. So I'd have to think about that, you know. We can definitely ask boards to create a generic board address where all the email can go to a single, a single, yeah, to the chair or to a staff member.
That helps with transparency, too. People have access to it, too.
Yep. And I would say that there are certain town boards and commissions, for example, the Planning and Zoning Commission, that because they are regulatory, they, there can't be individual emails sent to members of the board. They, it all channels through the staff member. So, but to Kate's good point, we could certainly make sure that there's a general email established for each board and commission and then someone assigned to monitor that email address.
That sounds great, just so people know how to reach out if they want to touch someone in town government.
Definitely.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Jim. Appreciate that. Okay. Any other public comment? While we're on public comment, in the context of public comment, I would like to ask this board if you have any suggestions on where in the agenda you would like public comment to reside. We can have it anywhere on the agenda we'd like it to be. And we've just always entertained it up top. I know that talking with Krista today, the Board of Education has public comment twice in their meeting, one at the beginning, one at the end. So I, you don't have to answer me tonight, but I'd like you to consider where you'd like public comment to reside on our agenda. Okay, first selectman's report. Again, I want to extend a very warm welcome to our newly elected selectman members this evening, Sarah Newman, Krista McNamara, and David Martin. I'm very excited for new energy and new ideas on the Board of Selectmen. We're going to miss Mark and Pam and Susan a lot. Their contributions have been enormous to the town. But I view our work as the Board of Selectmen to create a continuum of good service and good governance to the town of Darien. And I know that you all will. You've been serving the town very well in your capacities on the RTM and the Board of Education, so I feel fortunate that we have experienced town servants stepping forward on the Board of Selectmen. So we're going to have a great couple of years together.
Thank you.
We were just talking in executive session a little bit on some environmental issues and one of those we touched on was Holly Pond. Timely, last Friday, November 8th, I attended a meeting with the mayor of Stanford and members of our respective staff and DEEP to talk about the 2016 consultant study that proposed three alternatives to the restoration of the habitat in Holly Pond. And those three alternatives are, one of them is to dredge the shoal areas. You might be familiar with where those are if you ever drive by, go over the bridge by Giovanni's and look out to Holly Pond. It's the, it's the land area that you see above the water line that are considered the shoals. So the first alternative was to dredge the shoals, which has a price tag of between $6 and $43 million, depending on the toxicity of the sediment. The second option was a living shoreline, which create, moves some of the sediment to the sides and does some plantings to reestablish the environment along the shoreline. And the third alternative is tidal marsh, where you essentially take the shoals as they exist today and develop a plan to plant them and turn it into a salt marsh, which is the alternative that DEEP prefers because it doesn't require any dredging, it doesn't require disturbing the toxic sediment that undoubtedly exists below the post road. The sediment is largely from years of the state using sand on the roadways on the post road and I-95. So the next steps will be to convene a public meeting for the public to talk with DEEP about this tidal marsh concept. They have some monies available to them, DEEP, to share with us to begin the planning process for the implementation of a tidal marsh restoration. So remediation in Holly Pond has been a topic that's been on the table for probably two decades. So it would be great if we could move some kind of a project forward and I'll keep you all apprised as to when that public meeting will be, if you have interest. And lastly, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I'd like to express our deepest condolences on the recent passing of Pat Parlett and Ron Heinbaum. Both of these people have made significant contributions to our community and they will certainly be missed. And that's it for me. Kate's report.
We recently signed memorandums of understanding with the Town Hall Union, which is the clerical union, for employees both here at Town Hall and at the Police Department. Actually, it's all non-swarm personnel at the Police Department. Two things that we'll be doing this summer, this coming summer of 2020, we will be doing a trial flexible schedule. We will be open later, Monday through Thursday, and closed on Fridays. So we'll talk about, about it with the public more after the new year, but the department heads will be beginning to evaluate how they're going to operate under that schedule so we make sure that the public gets all the services that it wants and deserves as we do this to see if it's a feasible schedule to go forward on a permanent basis. And the other agreement was to put in place evaluations for the union personnel and the clerical union, which is something we had sought for quite some time. And that's it.
Okay.
Kate, the flexible schedule, is a trial next summer?
It's a trial. It'll begin June 1st and it will end the Friday, it's September 4th, I believe. It's the Friday before Labor Day.
Got it.
So I suppose it actually ends on the 3rd, but.
But it's basically, it's a trial.
It's a trial.
Got it. Thank you.
And again, to underscore, the primary objective is to increase the level of service to the public, to provide hours of Town Hall service that are not currently provided, but to also not negatively impact services that are currently provided today. And, you know, some of those that we have to see how we can work it out will be, for example, building inspections on a Friday. You know, we will likely need to make some arrangements to have those available in some way.
The agreement actually calls for one building inspector to work on Fridays.
Mm-hmm.
But we will, and so a little bit more Tuesday nights, we will be open until 7:00 PM. Our, you know, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday will be longer than, they'll be 8:00 AM to 5:15 PM, so it's a longer day than we have now for the public. But Tuesday nights, that one longer night was something that was important. We felt that with so many of our residents commuting to the city, you know, I don't think it addresses everybody, and I know one of the last trains coming in is at 7:30, but it should make a big difference for somebody. They won't have to leave work at noon time to get here, you know, before we close at 4:30. So hopefully it will be a benefit to both residents and to employees. We'll see.
It also provides some continuity on a Tuesday night for the staff that has to be here for meetings. We have a lot of meetings that happen on Tuesday evenings, so we'll see, we'll give it a try, see if it works.
What kind of notice are you anticipating, are we going to provide to citizens?
Well, they'll get some of it just tonight. It starts June 1st, so I really plan to start talking it up more after the 1st of the year. So we're talking six months, you know, lots of notice, you know, signs in offices and.
Press release.
Press, yeah.
Press release.
And to clarify, there's no change in personnel in our numbers of bodies to accomplish this?
No, no. And one of the reasons, you know, we had to negotiate with the union because of a longer workday, we didn't want to have to pay overtime to get a, you know.
That's another part of my question, right? Is that also an issue? But no.
Yeah. It was amazing the number of issues that you had to deal with when you went to the longer day, like how do you handle holidays? You know, so it took quite a bit of discussions to get it all worked out.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to new business. Item 6A, discuss and take action to appoint an acting first selectman. I would like to take the opportunity to recommend that we ask Kip Coons to serve as acting first selectman for the next year. You know, Kip being the most senior member now on the Board of Selectmen. For me, when, when, on those rare occasions when I'm out of town, we need to have somebody who can help with our emergency management team. That's the most important function of the first selectman is to convene and manage emergencies. So with your concurrence, I would like to suggest and move that Kip Coons serve as our acting first selectman for a period of one year. May I have?
Do you have a motion?
I need a motion.
You have a motion.
Krista motions. May I have a second? Sarah, seconds. Is there any discussion?
No.
Kip, do you want to say anything?
No.
He's not going anywhere. He has to build a school.
Anyway, thank you very much.
Okay.
Absolutely.
We appreciate you, your service, Kip. Okay. All those in favor? Great. Thank you.
I think I should say.
Okay.
You can vote now.
All right. Thank you. All right. Item 6B, discuss draft 2020. Can you imagine it's 2020? Regular meeting and budget workshop schedule.
And I have a slightly updated schedule. Jamie and Krista already have it. Jamie asked me late this afternoon to add the December holidays for the schools to the calendar. So that's what you see is schools are off from the 24th through the end of the year. So what I try and do when putting the schedule together is stick with the Monday nights because that's what has been done, but that's not written in stone. I try and give you a week break in between meetings wherever possible to avoid school breaks when possible, to avoid the RTM when possible. You'll see Tuesday meetings, those in January, April, July, and October. Those are the joint department head meetings. The last couple of boards have had them on Tuesday mornings. They do run, I'd say, about an hour and a half just for the meeting, the reports and stuff in the boards. You know, that's how the last couple of boards have liked to do it. That's what I've proposed, but that doesn't mean you can't change that. The one thing I would say, just keep in mind that you're asking all the department heads to be there, so if you do it in the evening, that's asking a lot of people to come back out. You can do it 5:00. You know, we do it 8:45 now, so, you know, that's all up to you.
You could do it 8:30.
Could do it at 8:30, yeah. I think we went to 8:45 for somebody to be able to drop their kids off at school or something.
It was for Rob Richards originally because he had his kids drop off.
Correct.
But he's not here. So it's up to you.
And what we did, typical, for years, we would have, you know, if you take January, for example, under, in years back, we would have had a Monday night, January 20th, Board of Selectmen meeting. And then we would have been back here.
In the morning.
In the morning at 8:45 for a joint department heads meeting. So we made the decision last time around to combine those two. So we have our, first, our joint department heads meeting that flows right then into a Board of Selectmen meeting in the morning.
And we do try to keep the agenda, the business part of the agenda for the board light on that so that you're not here all morning.
Yep. But we can, we can change this, you know, if people have strong feelings about doing something different. I would like to respectfully ask that we don't call our staff in, in the evening for a joint department heads meeting. I think that's a hardship on the staff. I think it's unnecessary when, I think, I think we all can generally make ourselves available during the day for a joint department heads meeting.
I think it's worked well. If I look at the timing, usually we're done with the department heads meeting, hour and 15 minutes.
Roughly, yeah.
So I'm thinking, so that's by 10:00 and then we have our meeting and we're done by usually quarter to 11:00 at most.
Yep.
So it's worked out pretty well. And I think that an opportunity for all the department heads to hear what the other department heads have to say is good, too, whereas they don't have to rush out in the evening to go play someplace else.
Sure. Yep. So just making that commitment to those four times a year, being here for a morning, you know, a good chunk of the morning. Hopefully folks can make that commitment if you agree. A couple of things that I wanted to sort of bring up, there's two, two conflicts with school vacations. The April break, we have our meeting set for the 6th of April, but school's on vacation, so I wanted to hear from the board about that. If we changed it to the 13th, it would mean that we had, you know, a Board of Selectmen meeting one week and the following week a joint department head slash Board of Selectmen meeting. It's not terrible to do that. Our requirement is that we have to meet two times a month until perhaps we lobby the RTM to maybe change that at some point in time. So what are your thoughts on that April vacation week? Do you guys have plans to go away with your families?
I have no conflict for that week.
Okay.
That day it works.
Okay.
I think I'm the only one with kids in the school that's been here.
Okay.
I can make it work, it's fine. I don't have any plans right now.
Okay. David?
No plans.
Okay. Kip, you're good with that?
For the 13th?
The 6th, April 6th.
You want to do it on the 6th?
Well, I'm asking, if there's conflicts for the 6th, we can look to move it on to the 13th.
Oh, no.
You have a preference?
You're good?
Yep.
Okay. I have no preference on that. And then probably a little bit more difficult holiday, December time, we're scheduled for meetings on the 14th and the 28th, recognizing that none of this is ideal around the Christmas holiday, but the 28th, I believe, is part of the school holiday.
It's during the school holiday, yeah.
21st isn't necessarily ideal either, but might be slightly better than the 28th since it's not during the school holiday. So I'd like your thoughts on having back-to-back meetings. We'd actually be here three times that month. We'd be here for the RTM on the 7th.
You could do it on the 7th and start, we start at 7:00, the RTM doesn't start until 8:00. So, you know, we could either start a little bit earlier or just make sure we keep it a light agenda on the 7th.
I'd prefer that. I prefer the 7th and the 21st.
I'd prefer a really light agenda since I have to prepare to present to the RTM on the 7th of December.
Oh, that's right. That's the, that's the big meeting.
But that's, you know, we could certainly make that work if we just, you know, kept it light.
Or maybe then we'll have gotten the RTM to eliminate the requirement for two meetings a month.
Oh, that's ambitious.
So what are your thoughts on that? Move it to the 7th? Have the 7th and the 14th or the 7th and the 21st?
If you're comfortable with the 7th, it probably works better to do the 7th and the 14th because there's always a possibility that somebody might want to travel the week before Christmas as well, so.
Okay. So back-to-back meetings, the 7th and the 14th is?
Unless somebody.
Folks might feel.
Yeah, okay. That would be my preference, as long as we have material to work with, I mean.
Yeah. Yep. Okay.
So we're going to move that one.
Yep.
So it's 7:00 and 14:00 in December?
Correct.
We're going to, do we vote on this next meeting? Is that how it works?
I've got you scheduled to vote on it next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're just closing, so you'll come back with a revised calendar?
Right, right.
And I'm sorry, April, we're going to move out of the 6th till the?
We're going to stick with that.
You want to stay with that, okay?
Yeah, if that, if that works for everybody.
Yep.
Okay. And the 28th of September, what is that?
Yam Kapur.
Oh, that's right. That's Yam Kapur.
And there's an RTM, there, the charter or the RTM rules, rather, call them the 4th Monday of September. So last year, we started the Board of Selectmen meeting early to accommodate the RTM meeting. And I think in the end, we found that we were done, you know, we started at 6:30 and we could have started at 7:00 and had no problem.
Okay.
But I'm not sure if Yam Kapur is going to be a problem.
Everybody had issues, meeting on September 28th?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. So again, we'll maybe, if possible, plan for a light agenda, but we'll never know.
Start at 7:00 or start at 6:30?
I'm going to say start at 7:00 because we always seem to have interviews that we have to take care of, so we'll likely be here anyway.
Okay. And are we going to move the department heads to 8:30 or stay at 8:45?
I would vote 8:30, but I'm only one vote.
Does that make sense for the staff?
Yeah, right. Well, Town Hall opens at 8:30, so, you know, they're all supposed to be here by then.
But do they need that?
Theoretically, they should have gotten themselves squared away before 8:30.
Do you have a sense if that, how that would be received to change it to 8:30?
No, I have no sense.
Okay.
What do you think, Bob?
Can we defer that decision until next week and get some feedback from department heads?
I'm sure it'll be a mixed bag. Some of them will want to get it done.
Yep.
But since Tony Hameki is always first, he'll have to.
I know. Figure out a system to shift that around a little bit.
You can go reverse that sometimes.
More often than not.
Okay. Are there any other potential conflicts with the Board of Selectmen calendar?
Any issues with the budget schedule?
Yeah, and the budget schedule.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
So we've really tried over the years to pare down the number of evenings that we meet on the budget. Sometimes that means, for example, on January 28th, we might have a longer night, but you kind of get in the groove and it's good to bang it out, as they say. And then we have budget deliberations scheduled in for two evenings. We may or may not need both of those.
We've usually found, as I remember it, using the chart here, that trying to get through all of that Tuesday, January 28th in one night is a little bit dicey, but we get through most of it.
It's a lot, but, you know, the majority of those departments are rather small.
Relatively minor. I understand.
Yeah. Wednesday night is the bigger, Wednesday is the more difficult. Those are really big budgets.
Yep.
So, you know, one thing we could do is split them up a little bit.
Yep.
So we could, you know, let me know before the next meeting if you have any thoughts on rearranging those.
Okay.
And that really, we can rearrange those up until.
Anytime, right?
You know, yeah. Because these are workshops, not regular meetings.
Right.
What is a workshop?
We don't take any votes, you're just talking, you're just going through the budget. So it's not the same as, you know, full agenda.
The department head comes up and presents and talks about their budget.
Right, I'm just curious, as opposed to a meeting, a regular meeting, a special meeting? It's still open to the public?
Yeah, still warned.
Yes, yeah.
F and B comes, representatives of the Board of Finance might be here. F and B comes, representatives of the Board of Finance might be here. There's a lot of give and take on the budget. On that, I should know this, but is there a public hearing on the budget, and does that get?
That is, right, so the public hearing is the Board of Finance holds it, and that's March tenth.
Okay.
The Board of Selectmen has to, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education have to present their budgets to the Board of Finance on March third, and then the Board of Finance holds a public hearing on March tenth. That's all prescribed by charter.
But this body doesn't have a public hearing prior to?
No.
This body's vote?
No. Under Yvonne Klein, we had some public hearings on the budget during the Board of Selectmen process. It wasn't a requirement, it was something that she chose to do, and I'm not sure when we stopped doing it, but nobody came.
Well, that's a good reason to stop. Well, you may recall, too, that when we have the public hearings on the budget, no one speaks about the Board of Selectmen budget. But I would say that were anyone to come to join our budget workshops and want to speak publicly about our budget, they would be given the opportunity to do so.
All right, good, yeah.
And maybe, maybe we can make that a little bit more formal this year, because we always welcome public comment. So you said March third, the Board of Selectmen and Board of Ed go to the Board of Finance to deliver their budgets. March tenth is the public hearing. And then, do you know when the public hearing is for the, the RTM?
You mean the RTM meeting on the budget?
Yeah.
The eleventh of May.
Oh, really? Is that over a month away?
The Board of Finance has to vote on the budget no later than the twenty-first of April, but I believe, when I saw their schedule, I think they're voting the week before. That's what their tentative budget schedule has, and voting the week of the, might be April fourteenth.
Is the Board of Finance on the fourteenth?
I believe that's when it was. Don't hold me to it.
Okay. So if you could do me a favor, Kate, could you add those dates, please, onto this document?
Yes.
Thank you.
One of the things we're going to try this year is after all the calendars are put together, for the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and RTM, we're giving it to the, giving something like this to all the department heads, in hopes that they will, you know, meet our schedules, get things into us on time, so.
But it's May eleventh, which is the RTM vote on the budget.
Yes, it's on your calendar now in red.
I see that, yep. I see the RTM meeting in red.
Yeah, and this is not necessarily all the meetings that the RTM will have.
No, no, no.
It's just the ones that they're required by.
Charter.
Yeah.
Got it.
I have no problem with this schedule, knowing that we can shift some things around and maybe reorganize, so that we're not particularly overburdened on one night. Sound good?
Yeah.
Okay, so these will come back for our vote next week. Okay, item six C, discuss and take action on proposal for minimum hours for TV seventy-nine operators. And we have Mr. Cameron again this evening.
Jim Cameron, program director of TV seventy-nine. For the new members on the, on the board, we have been around for about thirteen years now, and covering more and more meetings, so that's a kind of a good news thing. The bad news side of it is that we've been paying our camera operators twenty-five dollars an hour, same amount for the, for the past thirteen years. Inflation alone would, would adjust that up to thirty-two dollars an hour. We have six regular camera operators who work with us, only two of whom live in Darien. Some of them live as far away as Greenwich. And the problem we're having is that when we're putting together the schedule for camera operators to shoot meetings, they all want to go to the P and Z meetings, which run three hours, four hours, to justify their, you know, their commute. No one wants to do the short meetings. You know, you do a short meeting, I give you, I promise you at least twenty-five dollars, but giving a commute up ninety-five from Greenwich to shoot a meeting and then go back down, it's like, I don't think I really, I'm not available for that. So what I did was I did an analysis of the other town government stations that are part of the Area Nine Cable Council, in which I serve, and found that most of the other towns, Greenwich has a two-hour minimum at twenty-five an hour, and New Canaan has a three-hour minimum. I think in Weston, it's a hundred-dollar flat rate, whether the meeting lasts ten minutes or seventeen hours. So the proposal that I put together, and Mike Wheeler is here as well, he's the chair of the TV seventy-nine advisory board, which is the group appointed by you to keep an eye on what it is we're doing. And the advisory board looked at the proposal I put together and passed unanimously in our last meeting, and I'm running it past you for approval now, and that is to guarantee all of our camera operators at least a two-hour minimum, so they know wherever it is they're coming from, they'll make at least fifty bucks. But as a concession, that will also now include the time that they have, have either not been doing or have been billing separately to edit a meeting. After we record a meeting, we have to edit it from gavel to gavel, from call to order to adjournment, and then burn it to a DVD. It takes about ten minutes, but what I'm going to do is I'm going to roll that into the two-hour minimum. So if you have a meeting that's an hour, an hour and a half, I'll pay you for two hours, but I'm going to ask you to start that DVD dub. That will save me a lot of time in terms of getting it up on the Vimeo channel, so people can see it, and then doing the rotation as well, too. So the camera operators get a little more time, a little more money. It means less hours for me, which is fine, I may, I'm happy to do that as well, too. And I'm just looking for your approval of that idea.
Questions for Jim, or Mike?
How many meetings do you think this would affect?
I did an analysis of the September schedule, where we covered a total of thirty-two meetings in one month. You know, as you've been discussing yourselves, all the meetings seem to occur on Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. This week, we have five meetings today, and we have seven meetings tomorrow. So of the thirty-two meetings that we shot, I believe my analysis showed that sixty percent of them were under that two-hour minimum. So this will be an incentive for them. On the budget side, we are well within our spending limits for the allocation that the town gives us. We also receive money from the Area Nine Cable Council to be spent specifically on camera operators, and we have put that money aside for rainy day, snowy day, blizzard day, whatever, but we can draw that money down as well, too. So I don't think that this proposal will seriously impact our spend. We won't be coming to you asking for more money until the next bunch of seconds.
We, we checked that, just to be sure.
Good, what did you find?
Jen reported that it was minimal, it's minimal, and I have it, let's see, if this will load. We're looking at less than about five hundred dollars increase in our cost. It's minimal.
For what, a year?
Yes.
I'd, I'd say go to thirty dollars an hour, with two-hour minimum, that's just my feeling, but anyway.
Thank you for your generosity.
No, because I'm getting people here at seven-thirty in the morning.
Yeah.
And that's not always easy to do.
Yeah.
And often, the meetings are only forty minutes long.
Right.
And come up here at seven, and be ready to go at seven-thirty, and have a forty-minute meeting.
Can you incent, you know, give them incentive for certain times that they get thirty, seven-thirty meetings?
You're getting more complicated than we have to do it.
Yeah, that could, I think that'll make a little bit of a nightmare with the record.
Yeah, I don't want to open it up to bidding to say, who the lowest bidder is for a seven-thirty Thursday morning meeting, but, yeah, the gentleman that comes and does that early shoot on Thursday morning, the timing works out perfectly for him, because by the time he's out of here, he's on his way to his day job, opening at nine o'clock up in New Canaan, so.
Right.
You know, we have a very dedicated staff. It's not as if other towns who pay more have been coaching our camera operators, but neither do I want to have us be the low payer on the totem pole.
Right.
I want to be, I want to do right by my people, because they, they're there, they're dedicated.
And we appreciate that. I'd be actually open to what Kip is suggesting, because of your comment, that if you consider the cost of living increase over thirteen years, not that I'm, it's, it's not a large impact, so.
So it'd be slightly more than five hundred dollars a year, if we're talking about that, but if, if you are of the mind that we should be paying thirty dollars an hour with a two-hour minimum, that would be for thirty dollars for every hour, so that'd be a bit more than the five hundred dollars she's calculating.
More than five hundred dollars, yeah.
We have the money, I can, I can make that happen, and I think my camera operators would be very appreciative, so. If the, the new rule be thirty dollars an hour with a two-hour minimum, if you also do the editing for the, for the shoot.
Right, the editing has to be in there.
Yeah.
And if you have to come back for a transfer, you just know where to look and point.
Yes.
But it sounds, it sounds like it's making the process more efficient, too, which is intriguing to me.
Well, Mr. Wheeler and I are going to come before you, hopefully in the not-too-distant future, with a major proposal, hopefully to be funded by the Darien Foundation, to make the process even more streamlined by going to a digital server-based system and getting out of the DVD business, which lengthens our production time incredibly. We, you know, on, on Saturday, I was able to turn that Congressman Heim's town meeting around and have it on Vimeo within an hour, but that's, you know, you could do that in ten minutes with a server-based system. So everything would be, as soon as it's over, instantaneously available for people to be able to watch, but that's going to be another whole discussion, so.
Okay.
Thirty dollars an hour, is that what I hear?
Kate, do you think that?
I think we can, sorry.
Yeah, and I have, I have some extra money in that Area Nine, we just got, I just handed you a check for twenty-five hundred dollars from Area Nine to be spent on camera operators, and if we have to dip into that, so Christmas is coming, my staff will be appreciative.
Well, if we've gotten the money for that, we should be spending it on that.
Got it.
Any other questions or further discussions? So the recommendation on the table is to approve at thirty dollars per hour with a two-hour minimum.
Can we just, let's see, today's the twelfth, can we make it effective December first?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sure, I think that'll make it easier to keep track of.
So I'll read, I'll read the suggested motion. Darien Board of Selectmen hereby approves the request from TV seventy-nine to pay a minimum of two hours of pay at thirty dollars per hour, regardless of actual time worked, effective December first, two thousand nineteen.
Is that moved?
They have a second? Okay, Krista, seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Christmas came early.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Kip.
Jenny, would you mind taking Bobby's transfer first?
Absolutely, okay. So we'll move on to transfers, and do you think I have to amend the agenda to?
No, just if the rest of the board is agreed, it's the bad one.
Yeah, if you, if you agree to take seven C first, that would be great, okay. So we're looking at a fire marshal capital transfer to digitize documents of eighty-five hundred dollars, and that's eighty-five hundred dollars from the account for digitizing documents in planning and zoning, to move it to digitizing documents in the Fire Marshal's Department. And Bob Bush, our fire marshal, is here to talk about it.
Yes. My plan was actually request funding in the new budget for fiscal twenty-one, but learned that there was funds left over from the P and Z digitizing project. I received a quote for, we have about twenty-five file boxes of fuel oil tank records dating back to nineteen eighty, that we'd like to be able to digitize and then make available. Gildam Gold, make them available online for people to search from wherever, and they can print whatever documentation they need. We have several municipal searchers that come into the office, realtors that come in, attorneys that come in, and multiple times, we're making copies of the same records. It's kind of an inefficient waste of time, and if they're able to look it up online or at a station outside the office and print what they need, it makes it a lot quicker, a lot easier for us.
Do we have a station outside their office?
No, but I'm sure we could.
Can we, yeah?
I don't think that'd be a problem.
Yeah.
I mean, we've, we've done that with great success in other departments.
Yep.
Okay.
And we're doing it on a forward-going basis?
Yeah, so it'll be to catch up everything that we've got, which is about twenty-five file boxes worth, and then annually, I estimate probably one, maybe two file boxes a year of new records that would be digitized.
Yeah.
When you say the project has unspent balance of a hundred and nine thousand?
Where is that? Is that your budget?
No, that was, that was a budget previously approved for planning and zoning building for digitizing of their documents.
So we're still way ahead of the game.
We're way ahead of the game.
Okay.
I, I support this transfer, but would like to move forward the idea of having a self-service station, so that staff doesn't have to be overburdened by the requests.
Yeah, it's, having the self-service station up here has been wonderful.
Okay, board questions about this transfer request?
And where does this leave P and Z then?
They're done.
They're done, I'm sorry, is that just, okay.
That's, we verified that before, you know, we said that Bobby could have some of the money.
So they're done with the balance of a hundred and nine now?
Yes.
Okay.
And so what happens to that, those funds, or how does that process work? Except for?
Actually.
Ask her again.
We are planning to put out an RFP to get a technology assessment and technology plan. So I have an estimated cost for that, which is well within the one hundred thousand dollars, but Jen Charnesky and I have been working on this, and we plan to ask, when we get the results of the RFP, and we plan to ask for some of this money to be transferred for that purpose. The Board of Finance on a regular basis, during the budget process, reaches out through Jen to all the department heads, we get a list of our open capital projects, and if, if it's been open and unspent, or not much spent for a certain period of time, you have to justify retaining those funds, and the Board of Finance regularly clears those out. So anything that's unspent out of this will be cleared out in the spring, it goes back into the capital fund contingency account.
Well, I am personally all for the technology project.
Absolutely. Okay, so if there are no further questions on this transfer of eighty-five hundred dollars from P and Z digitized documents to fire marshal digitized documents, I'll entertain a motion to approve. David, may I have a second? Sarah? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great, okay. Thank you for waiting, Bobby.
Jamie, do you need to do anything separate about getting the station out front, or is that something that's just an operational thing that happens separately?
I don't think so, we'll talk to our IT department, yeah.
Yeah, we'll talk to IT.
Yep.
We have a, in the capital fund, we have a budget for replacing hardware on a regular basis, so we would go to that account to get it.
Okay, we'll go back up to transfer seven A, monuments and ceremonies. This is a transfer request of sixty-one hundred and thirty dollars from the Board of Finance Reserve to the cemetery cleanup, and I have to admit that I need a little bit of help understanding this. I read it several times, and I don't get it.
I thought it was just me.
The math doesn't exactly work for me here, so.
Okay, so I didn't read through this, here's what I know, that, you know, they had two accounts. They had the capital account, and, but they also had, we were cleaning up trust funds, old trust funds that had been around for years, and there was one trust fund, the Sarah Wilson account, which was for cleaning up cemeteries. So what happened was the cemetery committee submitted a bill, and they wrote two account numbers on it, but they didn't say. and they wrote two account numbers on it, but they didn't say how much to pay out of each account. And so I believe what happened is the Finance Department used all the Sarah Wilson trust money till that ran out, and then paid the balance out of the cemetery cleanup account. Well, the cleanup account lapsed, Sarah Wilson trust fund was gone, and they thought they still had this cleanup account, they thought, they still had the Sarah Wilson trust fund money. They thought the previous bill had been split like fifty-fifty. And the trust fund money would not have lapsed. But because Finance charged it all with no other instructions, they charged it all to the one trust fund. Cemetery Committee kept going out and spending money that they didn't have.
Because the account lapsed at the end of the fiscal year.
And because the trust fund, which doesn't lapse, had been used up.
Correct.
Do you remember how much the bill was?
Hmm, no, I don't, um, no.
At a point of order? Can I suggest that somebody rewrite this?
Yeah.
So it makes sense, so, and we're going to meet next week.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to make work for anybody, but this doesn't.
No, well, I'm not going to rewrite it. I will suggest to go back to the monuments and ceremonies.
Exactly, and say, look, guys, this, you have to be able to connect the dots here, because three of us are saying it doesn't connect.
Yeah.
Just, you know, make sense out of this.
I think what I'd like to see, if I can express this in a clear way. I understand using the Sarah Wilson account. That makes good sense to use the trust fund account. Is there not a new budget in place for this year for cemetery cleanup?
There is not.
Okay. So what they're, it sounds like what they're asking is for a reinstatement of cemetery cleanup funds for this current fiscal year.
Well, they thought they had the money left in the Sarah Wilson trust fund, and that they had spent all the money that was lapsing last year, and that they still had the Sarah Wilson trust fund money.
Okay, so the money.
I'll try and get it, you know.
How much lapsed?
I don't know.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Mm-hmm.
Does this cover the rest of the work for the rest of the year, rest of this fiscal year? Or is this just for activities that have happened to date?
It, no, it includes four thousand dollars for work, which they plan to do.
Okay. Okay, so the outstanding bill is twenty-one hundred.
Twenty-one thirty is work that they had done previously.
Okay.
And there's four thousand dollars in work that they plan to do. Maybe I'll see if they can put a timeline.
Just putting up, you know, sort of how much was the bill? How much exactly got spent from the Sarah Wilson fund? You know, it's sort of just to get the numbers to sort of total up.
Yep.
What I sort of tried to do was say, okay, you know, can I make the two sets of numbers match, right? And I couldn't do that, because I had no idea how much was spent from the bill.
And then should we be budgeting this going forward? I'm not sure how much work they, I believe the cemetery committee will be asking for money through monuments and ceremonies going forward, so.
As, as a aside, is, is doing something like, since we always do the wreaths at Christmas for the veterans and the cemetery?
We don't, we don't actually do that.
We don't.
That's all donated from that.
That's all, yeah, I, I know, but in terms, oh, okay, so maybe that doesn't work. I was just thinking, I remember, you know, having been in Boy Scouts, it's always periodic, you know, municipal projects that we participated in to, to help. But I didn't know if that would be the kind of, a potentially eligible project that the Boy Scouts might be willing to engage in to help clean up.
Maybe, maybe. And, and one thing that Finance is already doing that, you know, I felt would help resolve this is making sure that these committees get their year-to-date budget reports on a regular basis, you know, we'll send them out to them, so that they can see that. If they see, you know, all of a sudden, you know, they have no money, or they have less money than they thought they did, they're aware of it.
Right.
The cemetery cleanup has a bit of a, a challenged past. Not going too deep into it, but there are some historic cemeteries in town that the Public Works Department does a very, I'd call it a mow-and-blow. Whack the weeds, rake it out, clean up some of the branches, mow, mow the grass once or twice in a season. There are other cemeteries that, without the care and maintenance of this small group of people that has formed not too long ago. There's Sharon Kells, I don't know if you know Sharon Kells, but she's sort of taken it on as a personal mission to upkeep certain cemeteries, including the Norroton River Cemetery, which is one of several that have many of the descendants of our town buried in. So through her hard work, and a lot of money spent personally by her, which we probably need to address that situation at some point in time in terms of the value of the gift that she's given. We've had great attention on the historic cemeteries that wouldn't otherwise happen. So sometimes the Boy Scouts help if there's like an Eagle project that needs to happen, but it's not consistent enough to keep the cemeteries in good repair. It used to be that beautification took on some of the historic cemeteries, but they don't do that work anymore. So it's kind of a piecemeal approach to, hi, Steve.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Steve.
One room.
You are.
See you, guys.
Have fun.
It's kind of a piecemeal approach to making sure that, you know, there are historic cemeteries are kept up.
That's a great pause, absolutely.
So I like to support it while we have people who are willing to do it, but, you know, we need to work on the, the good financial management.
Well, it can be a challenge sometimes with the volunteer committees.
Yeah. Yep, okay, so we'll work to, to have a more clear picture of exactly what we need to vote on.
So we can table this one from now?
We can table this, yep. All right.
Okay.
Seven B is a transfer for general wages.
Right, so when we budget, you'll see this every year. We don't budget for, when we budget the non-represented employees' wages, we put them in at their current salary. So whatever people are making now is what we will put into the budget for 2021. If there's a union contract open, we also budget at their current, we budget at the grade and step that they will be at under the current contract on July one. So last fiscal year, we had two contracts open at the time we were doing the budgets. Town Hall Union and the Police Union were open at the time budgets were prepared. So those employees were budgeted at the grade and step they would be at on July one, under the existing contracts. And then you had all the non-represented employees. We set aside money in the budget based on what we estimate the contracts will come in at and what we, what we're posing as a general increase for non-represented employees. And then after the budget's passed, after contracts are settled, the Finance Department puts together the transfer to chew it all up. So we get it before the budget comes into place. You'll see the current, the revised budget amounts will reflect the appropriate amounts so that you're comparing apples to apples when you're, when you're reviewing the budget. So that's what this transfer is. It's a big number, and it covers all the, all the various departments.
What do, what did we have budgeted? And does the two's, is?
Is there a balance left in that account?
Yeah.
Well, yes, there'll be a balance left in the account. How much it is, I don't know.
Okay.
In the salary contingency?
In the salary contingency, yeah. You know, sometimes things happen, like people leave, and you don't have to, you don't have to fund the full wage increase.
I think the only question is that, what is the process by which non-represented people, their salary gets approved? Is it primarily your job?
I evaluate them.
Okay.
And based on that evaluation, every June, I come to the Board of Selectmen with the pay plan. So we don't share with you individual evaluations.
Right, right.
But we'll share with you the categories on the ratings, and what, you know, say, you know, this is the percentage we're proposing for an exceptional employee. This is a percentage for somebody who exceeds our expectations, and, you know, down the list.
So this is the dollar amount that reflected that conversation in June?
Yes, correct, yes, correct.
Correct.
And the settled contract?
Right.
Settled contracts probably are the bigger number.
Yeah, and it accounts for anybody who may have, you know, like, right now, we have a vacancy for Highway Superintendent in public works, so it's reflecting the fact that nobody's there.
Right.
Yep.
And is there a general percentage amount that's left in salary contingency?
Not an exact, I know, we just talked about that, but you leave a ten percent, or how? You mean, do we plan to leave a percent?
Yeah.
No?
No.
No. When we, when we're putting together the budget, we take a look at, you know, wherever, you know, with the non-reps, where everybody is, and what we think a general wage increase will be. If for any reason we think that we might have to make an adjustment where if we know that somebody is below their peers, and we might need to make some kind of general adjustment, we might include a dollar amount for that. This year coming up, the Public Works contract will be expiring. So we'll come up with an estimated number, what we think will need to settle that, and we'll put that in there. We won't talk about that publicly, but we will, we basically, you know, we have an Excel spreadsheet, and we sit there with every employee, and what, you know, what they're going to be at. But the police and the Town Hall Union will be set for the next year. So those, you will see budgeted in their individual line items. And we hope to be as close to the number as possible when we do it.
Okay.
Were there any unique factors in the police patrol line item? That's the only one that seems.
It's the biggest?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that one can be an interesting, interesting line. You know, if you have vacancies, which we have had in the Police Department this past year, you might see in anyone year where their overtime number goes way up. And the patrol number, you know, ends up with a positive balance. The other thing that can particularly affect that account is how many are getting their last step. They have a five-step, you know, scale. And the last step, it's an eighteen-month step, but it's big.
Okay.
So, you know, if you have, you know, if you were to have like four people going up from step four to step five in the fiscal year, that's a big jump.
Yeah, there were a bunch of changes in the department this year.
And the other thing I would say, this, their contract, uh, well, actually, it's not reflected in this transfer, because their contract was open for two years. So when we, the first year it's open, you know, we build an amount into the contingency. At the end of the year, we accrue that. If the contract hasn't settled, we accrue that, and that sits in a balance sheet account. But then we actually have to, in this year, have to, second year, in the budget, we have to account for the fact that, you know, they're going to be getting two years' worth, you know, so.
Is that what this is reflective here?
That one for the police, yeah.
It's two years, so it's two years.
They were open longer.
Okay.
But that one, that is our single biggest salary line item, is the patrol. It's like three million dollar plus, you know.
Okay. So this is really reflective of contractual obligations?
Contractual obligations and obligations that the, your predecessor board, right, to ask, sorry.
Yeah. Okay, any further questions on a transfer from salary contingency of two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars to a variety of salary accounts, as noted in the attachment? No further questions? May I have a motion to approve?
Does that move?
Kip moves, may I have a second?
Second.
Krista, seconds, all those in favor? Great, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our appointments. We have one appointment this evening to appoint William Wright to the Environmental Protection Commission for a term expiring on June thirtieth, 2021. May I have a motion to approve Bill's appointment? Krista moves, may I have a second? Sarah, seconds? All those in favor? Great, thank you. We thank Bill for stepping forward. Okay, I think it fell off the agenda, because at our, for our last meeting, we took it off the agenda, and it didn't make it back on. So I'd like, I'd like to ask the Board to approve an amendment to the agenda to add Agenda Review. So may I have a motion to add Agenda Review to the agenda? Krista moves, may I have a second? Kip seconds, all those in favor? Fine, great. So with that, I'd like to ask that at our next meeting, we ask the Sustainability Committee to come in and give us a report on the receipt of the bronze certification, and if they wish to move forward in pursuit of silver certification. And there'll be a few other things on the agenda, but that's one that I want to be sure that we, we get in sooner rather than later. And if anybody, you don't have to wait for a meeting under Agenda Review to bring forward an idea for on the agenda. You can call me and say, can we, you know, discuss a certain item? The only thing that I ask is that the agendas are prepared and disseminated the Thursday before our meeting. So sometimes it requires some research and gathering of backup materials. So, you know, a week in advance is probably the minimum for getting something on the agenda so we can be well-prepared. Okay? Okay. Anything else for Agenda Review? Great, then we have meeting minutes. We have special meeting minutes of October twenty-eighth, 2019. And I understand that even though you weren't part of this meeting, you can opine on the minutes.
Yes, the Town Clerk and I had a discussion, and you can, when you're voting on the minutes, you are voting to say that you believe the minutes to be accurate. So actually, some are all you, or you're in. So if you feel comfortable, you can vote on the minutes.
Okay. Okay, are there any corrections or additions, Kip?
Page three, second to last paragraph, last line, I believe Ms. Bush is spelled with a, incorrectly, correct?
An extra S.
Wow.
How did I not catch that?
Well, I just want to make sure you're not mischaracterized.
Yeah, twice.
Wow.
And then on page four, very bottom, under where it says page two, this is construction of the Weed Beach Meadows and Trail.
Yep.
Those are all my major, major catches.
Up page three, the fourth paragraph from the bottom, after Halloween, is not a state or federal holiday. I'm just, that's just a typo, but.
Oh, of federal.
Of federal.
Yeah, or.
That's the one I cut.
Thank you, good catch.
Okay, are there any further corrections or additions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended. Kip moves, Krista seconds. May, all those in favor? Great, thank you. We could have a discussion at a future meeting about meeting minutes. We were talking about it earlier today, and over my years on the Board, we have, we have gone from voluminous minutes to, you know, moving towards something that's a little bit more streamlined. I know that the Board of Education has, has. I know that the Board of Education has, has action-only minutes. So we might want to discuss as a Board how we'd like to move forward with our meeting minutes. We won't do that tonight, we'll do it.
But what would Kit do? We didn't have minutes to edit like that.
You have to look at our minutes of our building committee, we're very short.
But your meetings are three hours long.
No, no, our meetings are only forty minutes long.
Your work groups are.
The work, we don't, we let the, we let the architect put those minutes together.
Yeah. Okay, so let's plan to have that discussion in the future. So it's reflective of the will of this new Board. Okay. That's it for tonight's agenda?
Just a question, Jamie.
Yes.
They have a listing of meetings. Is Kate, is the RTM meeting on November 25th again?
I think I might be incorrect on that, so.
I mean, I just thought it was in.
I'll make sure it's correct on the next one.
No, but I'm just saying, they're not meeting twice this month, are they?
I don't think so.
Okay.
But I'll check.
Could that be like rules to make the committee?
So they have to meet for that.
So.
To see the committees.
So this is, we've never discussed this before, but good to discuss. This is only a small sampling of meetings that occur.
That's true.
And so I, I need to know if anybody finds this of value? How could it be more valuable to you if we have on our agenda forthcoming meetings? You know, I, I don't know why we only include Board of Finance, Board of Education. We don't include Planning and Zoning or.
They are meeting on November 25th, organization meeting, according to our website.
No.
Yeah, I think that's a really quick.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Is that assigning committees?
It says organizations.
Right, 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 yeah. I would assume, yeah, I mean, but I would, I would have thought right now that that would be organization meeting. I don't know if that.
Is tonight just the gathering of the new RTM? And then people put in their requests for committees?
They put in their requests, and when do they vote for the moderator? Is that tonight?
That's it tonight.
I heard clapping, I'm assuming that that's, that's how it just occurred, yes.
That is tonight.
Okay. So the forthcoming meetings, we could take it entirely off our agendas or we could change it in a way that becomes more meaningful to folks, so.
If you're looking for input, I would say that we could take them off. I think most of us are pretty up to speed on keeping up to date with when the, when the meetings are. And I'm sure that Kate has enough other stuff to work on.
Okay.
Just tell us when we have to meet.
Yes, yeah. I think maybe we can change this, Kate, to, you know, the next Board of Selecting meeting will be.
Right.
Right.
Perfect.
Okay. Good. All right, may I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Okay, wait, her hand went up.
Then she can.
It doesn't matter, I'll put it all the time.
Krista moves, may I have a second? Sarah seconds, all those in favor? Great, okay, well done.
Thank you.
Yay.
Okay, don't.